Garden Grove City Council, we will call to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call or roll?
Councilmember O'Neil.
I'm here.
Councilmember Tran.
I'm here.
Councilmember Dovin.
Present.
Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Winn Pinalosa.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bridigam.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here.
May I ask, who is doing the invocation tonight? Anna, okay. May I ask Anna to do the invocation, followed by Councilmember Joe Dovin to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Lord, we ask that you be with us as we seek to embrace the needs of our community. We also humbly ask that you guide us to answer those needs. Amen.
Please face your flag hand over our heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. Please be seated. Alrighty, we'll start with presentations. We've got a community spotlight in recognition of Foods of Garden Grove Social Media Campaign Challenge winners.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize the Foods of Garden Grove Social Media Challenge winners and their featured classmates. With the winners and their featured classmates, please come forward. So if you could just stand right near the podium and just turn around and say hi to all your friends. So earlier this year, the city and the Garden Grove Unified School District hosted the Foods of Garden Grove Social Media Challenge, where local high school students, grades 10th through 12, were invited to create and submit a 30- to 60-second foodie video about the Foods of Garden Grove eatery of their choice. Our participants were entered into an opportunity drawing, and three winners were chosen at random to receive a $100 gift card. The Foods of Garden Grove Social Media Challenge winners are Cameron Lee, Justin Mendoza, and Kyle Nguyen. We are going to take a brief moment to watch their winning videos.
Many G.G. USC students, okay, we're here literally a little too frequently, but yeah, like, kind of low-key, but the place is always busy, so let's show you guys around. Welcome to Finn. Well, I was, I think, I- Okay, say your name, your drink, and how you describe your drink.
I'm Sam. I got the peanut butter coffee. It's really good. It's really creamy and it's really sweet.
Oh, thank, what about you?
My name is Millie, and I got the banana coffee. It sounds really weird at first, but it's a really delectable drink.
And tell, tell us who, who got you into this drink?
Oh my god, Cameron!
I'm Lena, and I got the lavender matcha, and it is very matchery.
So without a doubt, our talented G.G. USC students showed us what it means to get a taste of Garden Grove. Featured classmates include Dayton Fan, Lena Deng, Melissa Vu, Nick Garcia, and Samantha Lam, joined the foodie fun and helped their classmates by appearing in their videos. The social media challenge is part of the city's Foods of Garden Grove program that launched in July 2021. The program features a dynamic city webpage and foodie map of over 150 select eateries that make up the city's vibrant food culture. The Foods of Garden Grove program also reflects the city's commitment to supporting small businesses, promoting local jobs, and inviting people to enjoy all that Garden Grove has to offer. At this time, the mayor and City Council would like to present the Foods of Garden Grove Social Media Challenge winners and their featured classmates with certificates in recognition of their tasty submission. Congratulations.
Hannah? Justin?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Hannah?
Thanks.
Lena?
Matcha-matcha?
Very machi.
It's really machi.
Nick?
She's gonna be known as the matcha girl from now on.
If you guys, please come up and let's take a picture together, so you guys can all pile in back there.
Okay.
Cut on both sides of the mayor here. We can't do this every year? Yes?
Okay.
All right, let's make it tradition.
Congratulations.
Hello. Hi, everyone. Hello, councilmembers. Hello, Mr. Mayor, and hello, Mr. How do you pronounce your last name?
Bridigam.
Bridigam. Thank you so much, everybody, so much for this honor. I would also really like to thank, I don't know if she's here today, but Ms. Avila. She was the one contacting us about our gift cards, and I really, really appreciate her. And I appreciate that the district does, or in the city, does so much to uplift student voices, as well as give us a fun platform that's outside of school and gives us motivation to be engaged in our community. So I couldn't have done this video with the help of my three friends, Sam, Millie, Lena, and yeah, thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, guys. Well done. Well said. All right, that takes us on to oral communications. You guys are welcome to clear out if you want, if you don't want to get stuck here, because we're gonna fill potholes and sign contracts and do stuff right now, so. Yeah, you're welcome. You guys are, you guys are welcome to clear out if you're here for the spotlight. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. All right, oral communications is next. They do have several cards, starting with Darren Wagner.
Evening, y'all. Hey, I just wanted to come up and say, I think what we're doing with the new bike lanes on some of these is really not a good idea. I mean, 90% of us get around in cars. How many people drive around on bicycles? And, I mean, you're taking away a lot of lanes and highways or roads that people use daily, and, I mean, some of the left turn lanes, they don't have a left arrow. So you get caught behind a line of cars, and only two cars will get through the intersection. I mean, really need to think this one through there. I, and I, I mean, I've only seen West Street and Gilbert. I'm sure you've done it, some more streets around here. Just clogging up the roads, and nobody uses the bike lane. I don't use the bike lane if I'm riding a bike. I get up on the sidewalk. I've been hit by a car before. It hurts. The car wins. I'm literally up on the sidewalk if I'm riding a bike. It just doesn't make sense to me, and that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. George Paris.
How's everyone doing tonight?
Good, good.
I live over by the 22 in Treask, or Harbor and Treask, and about 15 years ago, they took my neighbor's house for the freeway improvement, the widening of the 22. When they did that, I was sad for my neighbor, but happy because they were gonna turn my street, I live over on Sorrel, into a cul-de-sac. And this has actually turned into quite the nightmare for me. When they did the construction, they took out, they took my neighbor's house, they took out a street light, and in the last 10 years, it's just turned it into a kind of a haven for the homeless and drug addicts. Caltrans has kind of softened on their edge of the job, and we've had a lot of incidents over there. But the biggest thing is, since they moved my neighbor's house, we have new construction there. We have people that have been trying to build a house there for the last four years. And I've just found out that over the last six months, the only thing holding them up from finishing this project is the electricity. I was hoping City Hall, Building Safety, would be here tonight to address this. Apparently, they're having a tough time putting electricity into this house, because they want them to go underground with this house. They want the electricity to be underground. And I just got ahold of the blueprints from PG&E today. They want to go through my backyard and put underground in, which is a little disturbing to me, because it's gonna go through, unfortunately, a pet cemetery that I had back then. I know you're not supposed to do this, but it was a long time ago that I did it. And the tough part is, they don't want to run a line overhead from the telephone pole that my power line comes from to where their power could go. And they want, I imagine, like City Planning does, they ask for variance on this thing. But the thing is, all these houses were put there in '55, and they all have power lines overhead. And the house that was next to me, that was removed by Caltrans 10, 15 years ago, had power over my house to there. It wouldn't be a variance. It would just be replacing the power line that was taken out. So for them to make my neighbor hold them up for six months and dig through my backyard seems a little bit extreme for me. I, like I said, City Hall's not here, Building Safety isn't here to address this, so I don't know if there's anybody. I know Kim here is in my district that could maybe say anything, but I don't know how to address this. Any suggestions here?
Just to clarify, oral communications, just, you speak, it's not a conversation.
Oh, so that's, that's what I'm here to, to express my feelings about, yeah, I just, like I said, I just got this about two hours ago. It shows the plans of their idea, their best ideas to dig through my backyard, rip up a bunch of concrete and go through, to go to my power line underground when they could just run one simple line. It's my house. There was a line there before. I didn't object when I bought the house. I wouldn't object to them running it back. I guess that's all I have to say. Like I said, City Department, Building Safety isn't really here, so thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll pass along your card for somebody to reach out. Eric Corona.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, and may please the council. My name is Eric Corona, here on behalf of the California Department of Transportation, affectionately called Caltrans. I'm here on, to give a comment on item five on the agenda, or five A. Caltrans' vision is to facilitate a brighter future through all, through a world-class transportation system, and I just want to emphasize, that vision is only achievable through strong partnerships. And this project is made possible through our strong partnership with the city of Garden Grove. Specifically, the visionary leadership that City Manager Kim brings to the table, and a lot of hours and a lot of innovative thinking from city staff, including Sergeant Jeff Brown and Kristy Lee. And so I just want to emphasize, our partnership with the city is very strong. We're leading the way through the innovative, and I repeat, innovative, delivery of this project. This is very much breaking the mold of what is typical in terms of how we deliver projects. And I want to point out that this project specifically is, is not just enhancing and protecting vital public infrastructure on the, on the Garden Grove freeway. It is, it is fundamentally, its purpose is to advance the quality of life and the safety of residents and visitors that we collectively serve. So on behalf of the California Department of Transportation, I want to memorialize our support and endorsement of item five A. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming out in person to say those words. We're excited about this. James? Sorry, I can't read the rest.
Good evening. I'd like to preface my comments with saying, I think 2024 is gonna be our year. Really do. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and citizens of Garden Grove and Town Hall officers. My name is James Mack Foster. My neighbors call me Jody. I'm here with my neighbor and friend, Rick Caruso, and we have a request for the Town Council this evening to provide adequate streetlights for our neighborhood. I've lived in Garden Grove now for 11 years and change, and in Orange County for almost 14 years. I'm a transplant from the East Coast. Often people ask me, why am I still in California? I say, you can't beat the weather with a stick. So I've come, I've come to call Southern California my home. Since moving to Garden Grove in December of 2012, I have noticed that my neighborhood, which is off of Garden Grove Boulevard between New Hope and West Street, is extremely dark at night and has poor visibility when it comes to seeing people walking down the streets of Lemonwood Lane, Woodland Lane, and Stanford Avenue, which are the streets that create the perimeter of our neighborhood. I found it interesting, when I researched this in the history of Garden Grove, that it was in 1976 that this was last, people in my neighborhood last made a formal request for street lighting. Now, reasonable, reasoning for this not placing street lamps in this part of Garden Grove 47 years ago may have been very sound at the time. However, at the cusp of a new year, 2024, 47 years later, I believe new reasoning with a fresh perspective is very much in order. The families of the children that play in the streets will sleep much better, knowing their loved ones can be seen more clearly by the motorists. Thank you.
I'm not the Rick Caruso that ran for mayor, so let's get that straight right now. And I don't want your job. So I own the house at 12772 Lemonwood, and I've owned it for 20, 21 years now. And like my friend Jody had said, is it's very dark in there. We have a number of neighborhoods that do not have street lighting on them. And the, the fact is, the only error that Jody had said was, the properties were built 71 years ago, in 1952. And that's a way different living standard than where we are now. And what we're talking about, street lighting for neighborhoods, are capital improvements, which cost a lot of money, and Garden Grove doesn't have lots of money. So my question is, has anybody from the city, or anybody, checked in to see that the federal government right now is throwing money left and right, and structural, on improvements, and there's grants, and there's money floating around all over the place? Is there anybody in Garden Grove who's in power, working there, you guys, that's looking into any grants to provide that? Because here's the thing, is, in my tax bill, there's a supplemental street lighting assessment that's on there every year, but my neighborhood doesn't have any street lighting. And the problem is, every neighborhood that has street lighting is paying the same amount that I'm paying. I'm paying the same amount that they are. That's an inequality situation, where I'm not getting the equality of what everybody else is getting. So I'd like to have one of you, two of you, all of you investigate, because we do have a lot, a lot of neighborhoods that do not have street lighting. When you don't have lighting, you have crime. You have higher crime. You have all issues which the policeman here, well, I'm sure, would say, you're right. And you have a safety factor, which Jody brought out, about kids running around. It gets dark at 5:00 right now. There's kids running around. They're riding on their bikes, you know, their electric bikes, at 30 miles an hour with a small little flashlight going on. You can't even see them. So street lighting is very important, and the problem is, is I'm paying for that, and it's not that much money, so I don't, it's not about the me paying another $17 or 70, whatever it is, per year. It's not the issue. The issue is, it's any, it's not an equal situation on how you're spending the money, or how I'm being charged for the money. And that's like a discrimination, if you will, that my neighborhood is paying for, the same for everybody, and we got no lighting. And there's a lot of neighborhoods that are like that. So I'd like to see this council do something and see if the city can find out, is there any money available for capital improvements for these streets, because it really is needed. And thank you in advance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, for bringing that one up. We will look into it. That's all the cards that I have. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on any matters not listed on the agenda under oral communications? Okay, we will close oral communications, and at this time, we will recess to conduct our other legislative bodies' business. So we'll start with successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call or roll?
Member Bridigam?
Here.
Member Tran?
Yeah.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Winn Pinalosa?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neil?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. All right, we already did oral communications, so next is reorganization, selection of chair and vice chair. It's currently myself as chair and John O'Neil as vice chair. Okay? Can we do both at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right. Consent items, just receive and file the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Second.
All two vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn, and I'll hand it over to Industrial Development Authority Chair, John O'Neil.
Okay, welcome. Thank you to our annual meeting of the Industrial Development Authority, regular meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Member Bridigam?
Here.
Member Tran?
Yeah.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neil?
Here.
And Chair O'Neil?
Here.
Thank you very much. We've already had oral communications simultaneously with council. Again, on this board, we're going to do a reorganization, selection of the chair and the vice chair. Do I entertain a motion on that, or any recommendations? This is an annual meeting, unless there's something, a special meeting within the middle of the year for basically pass-through bonds. This is the agency to do that.
I'll move it. Keep it the same.
Second.
You guys don't want to do it.
I could run one meeting a year. I can do that. We have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you very much. We do have a couple consent items for receive and file the minutes. Those can be acted on simultaneously. I have a move approval-
Second.
-calendar in a second. Call for the vote. Wow, we're quick tonight.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters before this authority? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn to the next regularly scheduled meeting, is December 10, 2024, so expect everybody to be here. This time, we'll adjourn back to council.
Mayor, you have an item three on the council agenda?
Yes, I skipped it. I glitched. So we're reopen City Council, we'll go back to reorganization. We have selection of Mayor Pro Tem for next year. Colleagues?
I'd like to discuss, you know, we've got an upcoming election in year of this year, and honestly, the Mayor Pro Tem job is fairly a ceremonial type, but a lot of people voting it can mislead, so I, I strongly think it should be somebody who's not intending to run for an office, where they could potentially mislead the, the public or not. So with that being said, I know we have a couple of new council members, and I know Cindy shows up to darn near every event. She's very, very active, and I think she'd be an awesome Mayor Pro Tem. And I know she hasn't had a shot at it yet, so I'd make the nomination for Cindy Tran.
Any other nominations? I will second that.
Well, I just want to make a comment. I have stated I'm not running for mayor in 2024, and I, I intend to keep that promise. And also, I'd like to stay neutral as far as the looks of it, just like George says, it's a, it's a ceremonial role, so it's basically, in an election year, I cannot, in good conscience, vote for any candidate that's running for mayor to be Pro Tem. So that's just fair, but I also want to state that the candidates that I know about that will run for mayor, I think each and every one of you is highly qualified to be mayor. So I'm a bit torn. To neutralize my own vote, I'm gonna nominate myself and vote for myself, because I'm not running, and I will not endorse anyone. Thank you.
Kim?
I just want to make a comment. I don't particularly care to nominate anyone. I'm just, it's funny that this time around, we're being very conscious about who's running for mayor, who's running for what office, in our discussion about Mayor Pro Tem, because that's never been the case before. And quite frankly, I think whoever's gonna be Mayor Pro Tem should be someone that's gonna be competent at the job, not just showing up to events, because there are plenty of us here who are not prepared for meetings, don't read the materials, and are not asking questions. And so this isn't just a ceremonial position to be a council member. You should be ready to go. You should have your questions in line and know the material, and it should not just be photo ops and attending events and talking about the events that you went to.
Okay, so where do we go with that? We've got, we've got a-
Motion in a second.
There is a motion and a second. I'll just add to my comment. I like the fact that the last seven years or further, you know, we've, well, since we've been districts since 2016, this council has always kind of rotated the Mayor Pro Tem, kind of like cities that have, you know, a rotating mayor. Our council, when we went to a sixth district, citywide elected mayor, went to kind of a rotating Mayor Pro Tem, so that's what we've always done. We've all held this, except for Joe and Cindy, so we've always kind of rotated it, and, and that's the way it's worked. It's worked pretty good so far, so that's why I second it and give the folks that haven't had it an opportunity to do that.
I could honestly be okay with either of them, to your point.
Yeah, oh yeah. I think anybody on here could, might as well.
Okay.
Councilmember Dovin did, is it my understanding that he made a substitute nomination?
Yeah. I was gonna- it's basically, in an election year, I cannot, in good conscience, vote for any candidate that's running for mayor to be pro temp. So that's just fair. But I also want to state that the candidates that I know about that will run for mayor, I think each and every one of you is highly qualified to be mayor. So I'm a bit torn. To neutralize my own vote, I'm going to nominate myself and vote for myself, because I'm not running, and I will not endorse anyone. Thank you.
Kim?
I just want to make a comment. And I don't particularly care to nominate anyone. I'm just, it's funny that this time around, we're being very conscious about who's running for mayor, who's running for what office in our discussion about mayor pro temp, because that's never been the case before. And quite frankly, I think whoever's going to be mayor pro temp should be someone that's going to be competent at the job, not just showing up to events, because there are plenty of us here who are not prepared for meetings, don't read the materials, and are not asking questions. And so this isn't just a ceremonial position to be a council member. You should be ready to go. You should have your questions in line and know the material. And it should not just be photo ops and attending events and talking about the events that you went to.
Okay, so where do we go with that? We've got, we've got a-
Motion in a second.
There is a motion and a second. I'll just add to my comment. I like the fact that the last seven years or further, you know, we've, well, since we've been district since two thousand sixteen, this council has always kind of rotated the mayor pro temp, kind of like cities that have, you know, a rotating mayor. Our council, when we went to a sixth district, citywide elected mayor, went to kind of a rotating mayor pro temp. So that's what we've always done. We've all held this except for Joe and Cindy. So we've always kind of rotated it. And that's the way it's worked. It's worked pretty good so far. So that's why I second it and give the folks that haven't had an opportunity to do that.
I could honestly be okay with either of them.
Yeah.
To your point.
I think anybody on here could. Might as well.
Okay.
Councilmember Dovin did, is it my understanding that he made a substitute nomination himself?
Yeah, I was just sort of playing that in my head, so.
Well, did it get seconded?
No second, correct.
It didn't get seconded, though.
Okay, so no second. All right.
Okay, so call to vote.
Okay. Motion received, six yes votes, with Councilmember Dovin abstaining.
Actually, coming to meet this meeting, I never thought wanting to do a mayor pro temp because, just because, like some of the council already mentioned, that councilmember Chudov and I are new on this diet here. But thank you so much for believing in me. As you know, everything I do, I do for our residents, for our city, no other reason than that. So thank you for giving your vote, from both of you. And thank you for speaking your mind. And so I take what you said, and thanks to everyone here. Thank you.
Congratulations. When does that take effect? Like immediately or not?
Next meeting? Oh, yeah, now. But yes. But the next meeting, it'll be on the agendas.
I'm just counseling now. No more mayor pro temp.
All righty, we will move along. Consent calendar. It's recommended that items four A through four L be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Items for consideration, five A, this is the Caltrans agreement, cooperative agreement.
Item five A is an approval of an amendment to the cooperative agreement with Caltrans and award a construction contract to Quality Fence Company for the Caltrans fencing improvement project. And I believe community development, or, I'm sorry, economic development is here to give that report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The item before you, it's for the Caltrans fencing improvement project, a collaborative effort between the City of Garden Grove, the Garden Grove Police Department Special Resource Team, and Caltrans. This March, the council approved the cooperative agreement with Caltrans for the installation of fences, decorative paving, and gravel along the underpasses of Freeway Twenty-two, from Springdale Street to Garden Grove Boulevard. Under this agreement, it was anticipated that the city could request for additional funding to supplement construction costs after soliciting bids. Due to the absence of a responsive bid proposal and through sole source negotiations, the city selected Quality Fence for the award of the contract in the amount of seven hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars. Additionally, Caltrans approved an amendment to the cooperative agreement in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars, bringing the total project amount from six hundred thousand dollars to one million dollar, including contingency items. Quality Fence is a reputable company that specializes in fabricating, manufacturing, and installing fences with over fifteen years of experience in administering governmental projects. Notably, the most significant governmental fencing contract is the ongoing five million dollar yearly commitment for homeless abatement and freeway underpass control along Freeway Fifty-seven with the County of Orange. There is no fiscal impact on the general fund. Caltrans commits to fully reimburse the project cost. It is recommended that the City Council authorize the city manager to amend the cooperative agreement with Caltrans for an increased funding from six hundred thousand dollars to one million dollar, including all necessary documents on behalf of the city. Authorize additional appropriation of four hundred thousand dollars per the cooperative agreement with Caltrans. Award a contract to Quality Fence in the amount not to exceed seven hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars. Authorize the city manager or designees to execute the contract and make minor modification as appropriate on behalf of the city. This concludes my staff report. Staff, as well as our representatives from Quality Fence and Caltrans, are available for questions.
And if I may quickly, Mr. Mayor, I would like to reiterate what our Caltrans representative said earlier. It has really been a great collaborative relationship, and I'd like to publicly thank Kristi for her efforts on those discussions as well.
Thank you all. Thank you, Kristi. I'd also like to thank Jeff Brown, who I see sitting back there, too, and all your passionate efforts behind the scenes to stir this up and make this happen. So I appreciate all you guys. And I'm excited to see this actually come about. Any other questions, comments, or a motion?
I got a quick comment. Honestly, this is exciting to me, because I think traditionally what happens is these encampments, people, you know, the officers and the public works folks and the hazmat and everything goes in there and cleans it out. And then they leave. And the next day, everybody's back. And so it's just a rotating door type of a thing. And I think this is going to solve a lot of that. This fencing is very thick. I don't think it can be cut with standard kind of tools. You can't climb it. I just, you know, our city shares a lot of borders with other cities, in particular Westminster. And, you know, I really hope that we can bring them into the same program or recommend it to them. Or I don't know what we would do, because a lot of the problems that move into our area come from the Westminster encampments and whatnot, and vice versa. You know, so I think we're, this is going to fix half of the problem, but we still have the other side to deal with, right? That, from the Westminster side. So I don't know, my, first of all, I'd like to make the motion, because I think this is a wonderful thing. But I would also urge staff to reach out to Westminster and maybe suggest they look at this, or, you know, as a potential, is, you know, so we can address the whole situation and not just our side of it.
John?
I'll go ahead and second it and just elaborate on that. You know, maybe we can be the glue that sticks these other cities together. You got not only the county, Caltrans, Stanton, Westminster, Garden Grove. This, we really need to fix that freeway connection to all those cities right there. And if we just do our side, it's just a Band-Aid, like George is saying. So we really need to, if we can help those other cities facilitate working with Caltrans and others to get fences built. Unfortunately, nobody wants to build the fence. But in this case, everybody's been so frustrated, you go in, you do all this work, you spend a bunch of money, clean it up, and like, the next day, it's back. So we've got to, it was either a security guard twenty-four hours a day or a fence. And I think the fence makes more sense. So I'll be happy to second that.
I just have a quick comment first. Thank you for coming here and representing Caltrans and celebrating with us, really, this award. It's very important. And I want to thank Director Bill Murray, who took me out to actually tour to some of the areas where we're getting the fencing, especially around our reservoirs. It's not just for looks or safety, but security, so that we don't get sabotaged because somebody breached a fence. Those are very important, key infrastructure we need to protect. I also agree with the collaborative framework that I came in as a council member, that we want to partner with a lot of different government agency, county, and state level, in this case, Caltrans. And I am working with the Ad Hoc Committee for Homelessness in Westminster. They've asked me to join them, and I think that's a great idea, that we have a homeless ad hoc committee, or at least would participate with other cities in a more of a collaborative and partnership approach. But this is a really good start. I remember when my wife was on council, we had the redevelopment fund, redevelopment agency. We don't have that anymore. It's been years since we've gotten any state funding towards that purpose. So this is a very fresh, very fresh, and we are tremendously grateful for the assistance. This is not a small amount, and hopefully, it'll keep coming, because we certainly need more help from the state and other agencies. Thank you.
Hi. First, I want to say sorry and thank you, because I know that both you, Kristi, Sergeant Brown, and City Manager Lisa Kim have heard an earful from me almost every day regarding Harbor and Trask, which is the bane of my existence. We had someone come speak to that today, and I'm grateful that they did. I promise I did not pay him to do that when we knew someone from Caltrans would be here. This is definitely a most welcome grant and new innovative program, as stated before. But that does not alleviate the immediate needs of this area specifically. We have encampments growing back in the areas we've addressed multiple, multiple times, and expended hundreds of thousands of city dollars. And it's just getting worse, and it's just getting more dangerous. We have students getting sexually assaulted. We have folks making encampments behind the Motel Six. Fences are still being cut. People are half naked right on major intersections in broad daylight. I would say, I would love to say that it's getting better, but if anything, I think it's gotten extremely worse, specifically around Harbor, Trask, and New Hope areas of the freeway. And so I don't know how fast this is going to relieve that problem, but we need to make sure that we have a lot of attention focused on these areas specifically because of its proximity to residents and schools and young children, knowing that there's already been violent offenses in those specific areas. It doesn't help that we also have a senior and disabled rehabilitative center right across from the Motel Six. We also have incidents at that fire station right there. And that just goes to show how brazen this situation is getting. And I think my colleagues and all, sorry, you guys, it's hard to breathe when you're growing a human and she's pressing against your lungs. So I'm out of breath. I just want to say that, you know, all of my colleagues have heard me really focused and be stressed about mental health and caring and wraparound services for the homeless individuals. I really do care deeply about that. But also, just egregious and brazen behavior has gotten extremely frustrating, to the point where like, I no longer can go out and walks around the perimeter of my neighborhood. And if I'm feeling that way, I can only imagine how the students who have to travel between Santiago, Doig, and Clinton feel. And it's their parents. So I just don't want us to lose focus. Although this is amazing, it's taken a really long time for it to happen, and we're just seeing the problem get worse. And I think it's going to get even worse before it gets better. But otherwise, I just want to thank everyone for their hard work and their innovative thinking and trying to resolve the problem as fast as possible. But I know with bureaucratic red tape, it doesn't work as fast as we'd like it to. Thank you.
Anybody else?
So I just want to say thank to our staff and Caltrans for doing this, especially Sergeant Brown and Kristi. From the day one, homelessness was something that I have a concern. And I just can't remember how many times that I tag along with you to do the cleaning. And I did tag along the ride along and go and talk to the homeless and just see how much work that the SRT team had to put in. Every day, you know, go and clean up after the homeless and different things relate to this topic. I actually have a couple of the business owner along there, and they have a concern, and they talk about, you know, the empty building and many other issues. We even have the meeting where that the people living in that area come and talk to it, and just want the council member to be there. And thank you for sending all the policemen to come and talk with them, too. But that's the little thing that we have to do to make, you know, our resident life better. And so thank you for doing that. And we're looking forward to have a better fence, so that we, you know, people don't jump over anymore. So thank you.
I think it's important that we all make a comment and show our support, and honestly, just our glee for this, this project coming to fruition. I think one thing that Garden Grove does really well is we collaborate, and we find creative solutions. And that's exactly what this is for the betterment of the community. So many people want to see black and white solutions that we can bring about to combat homelessness. And that's not always easy to do. But this is one of those situations where we know this is physically going to help. So congratulations to the entire team for making this happen. It's a good day for Garden Grove. Thank you.
Awesome. We have a motion. Well, we haven't done it yet. We have a motion and a second. Let's call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thanks for coming in person. We appreciate that. All righty then. So we'll move on to ordinances presented for a second reading, item six A.
Item six A is second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-nine forty-eight entitled, An Ordinance of the City Council, the City of Garden Grove, amending sections fourteen twelve ten, fourteen twelve thirty, and fourteen twelve fifty of chapter fourteen twelve of Title fourteen, Water of the Municipal Code Relating to Water Rates and Charges and Meter Failures.
Motion? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to really urge the council to think on this. This is the last time that we're going to hear this. And, you know, I don't know that this is the largest tax increase that, for water, that the city's ever done. I haven't researched it. I've heard that term being used a few times. It's definitely one of the largest, in my memory. You know, right now, I don't know, over the last ten years, the inflation rate in America has been about two point six percent. The last two years were very high, but the eight years prior to that were fairly low. And it all averages out to two point six percent. Our consultant on this told us that every year was based on a worst-case scenario of his projections. You know, I'm looking at these numbers for this, this increase, and it's gone awful high. I mean, it's, you know, I would prefer to see us adopt a three percent standard. We want the water to be, we don't want to make money, but we also want it to be, you know, we want to break even, basically. And, you know, when we take the money from the taxpayer, they can't afford it. These people, I mean, our communities are, a lot of them are working two, three jobs, trying to keep, you know, make ends meet. And when we throw this kind of tax in, into the mix for water, and it doesn't raise to six or eight percent, the city never goes back and says, oh, here's a check for the money we took from you. It never goes back to the taxpayer. They always just find another project to spend the money on. I have, you know, looking at these numbers, the bi-monthly minimum charge, the first one on the three-quarter inch line, twenty-four percent increase over the next five years. And that doesn't include the increase for the first year, from thirty-five to forty-three dollars. Okay? That's, that's significant over five years. It's twenty-four percent, not including the first year's increase. So it's probably more like twenty-eight percent. The big one, the one and a half inch line, the one or one and a half inch line that most of our residents use, that we, most of us have, from eighty-seven twenty-eight a month to a hundred and twenty twenty-four a month, a thirty-seven percent increase. This isn't a one or two percent. This is a major increase. The big one, forty-five percent increase. And again, these are mostly for our businesses that use a lot of water. But the basic minimum charge, or the bi-monthly minimum charge of fifteen hundred and ninety-two dollars is going up to two thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars. Forty-five percent over five years. How can we, as in good conscience, justify that? Because we know, we know the water rate's going to go up. We know the prices are going to go up. And we can plan responsibly at three percent a year. And, and if we need to do a pass-through every year or whatever, we could do that. If it goes up more than three, we could always do a pass-through, right? But to just pass this arbitrarily forty-five percent on our business community and our big water usage, it's huge. The bi-monthly commodity delivery charge, tier one, is going up twenty-five percent. Now, it's a small dollar amount, three dollars and forty cents to four twenty-seven, but added on top of your bi-monthly minimum charge, the tier two, going up fifteen percent. The bi-monthly capital improvement charge, again, for the most standard size, the one and a quarter inch, one or one and a quarter inch, we're looking at twenty-three percent on top of those other two charges to a- To it, it, and then the standard, which actually kind of makes sense, the bimonthly fire service rate charge on top of all those other ones, that's going up 30%, but it's consistent across the board. It's 30% no matter what size of water service you have. 30%. This is not just a nickel or dime 15, 14 cent water tax rate. This is a huge one, and honestly, I think it's completely unnecessary. I know we need to, we need to, we need to increase the taxes. It's something that we have to do. It has to break even at least, right? We have to be able to pay for the water, the equipment, the service. But to me, this is way too much, way too much. So I just urge you guys to consider this. This is the last time that we can tell them, go back to the drawing board and bring us something back that is a little bit more user-friendly to our community. And I guess that's all I got to say.
Well, I'm going to square off with the ex-mayor pro tem, Bridigan, here. Because I will vote this up, and I'm probably the major sponsor on this, and I'll take the credit or liability, however you want to look at it. I sat through a couple of water rate reviews, and I grilled the consultant until he was blue in the face. But I trust his numbers, and I trust his recommendation. And I also trust our director, Bill Murray, who sat through every review. I ran the numbers, and I agree with George that it should be closer to 3%. In fact, I capped it at 5, which I expected to be the high end, but it went over the 5%. So it's a bitter pill, but I see it as that it's growing pains. Our city's growing, our needs are growing, and the water infrastructure needs to be protected. There's nothing more important to this city than our utilities, especially water. So I'm not willing to kick this ball down the road, whether it's months or years. I'm going to vote it up, and I recommend that our council vote it up. And also for residents to get behind it and support it, because this is good for all of us. We need this, and we need this now. And I've said on this dais, I'm the one that get that red knocker on my door. Every few months, we forget to pay our bills, and then we get that red knocker, and I have to come down to City Hall and pay it myself. It's no fun when you're under threat of getting your water shut off. It's happened to me at least a couple of times that I have to do that. So I feel people's pain, and I know we're trying to spread the pain a little bit better so that the people who can best afford it get hit with a higher bill. And we will have help for those who can't afford it, seniors, the most vulnerable people. So if we over-collect, we will give back. I'll make sure that we do that, that the most vulnerable of our residents will get the help they need, and they won't be facing sticker shock. So with that, I will pass it, but also instruct staff to look for ways to take care of those that are in most need and to be able to give back to them, those who can't afford it. And there are nonprofits in our community at all levels that will help people with their utility bills, including water. I've interviewed those people. I've talked about those organizations. And we'll make those resources available. They're not Band-Aid solutions. They're long-term solutions. So be on the lookout for that on our website when we implement the rate hike starting in January 2024. I'll take responsibility for it. Thank you.
I want to echo a lot of what Councilmember Dovin has shared. It's never fun to have to raise rates for our residents, especially on essential and necessary utilities such as water. This is why when we first started this process, I really urged staff to make sure that they were going around to the community and educating our community. I know when I was first elected, we did like an Electeds 101 or a City Council 101, city government, to try to educate the community, because no one knows who we are or what we do or what we manage. We oftentimes get called for things that are out of our jurisdiction and asked to pass, you know, ordinances or resolutions or proclamations for things that have nothing to do with city business, and people fail to realize what their money actually goes to. I don't think that we do a great job of communicating where their money goes to. And so when they see things like this, they're often taken by surprise, and they're oftentimes pissed off, and I don't blame them. As someone who lives almost paycheck to paycheck, whose HOA is unregulated and enhances it every year, absurd amounts, this year is 4.5%, I understand that pain. But I know because I've been in this seat for seven years in the collective process that this is my contribution to ensure that my water is clean, that my water is coming out. But not everyone else knows that or understands that. This is also something in which as a city, we need to continue to lobby our state and federal government agencies to ensure that they are providing us with monies to fix infrastructure so we're not relying on rate increases to do that. But essentially, we purchase water, we house water, and then we sell that off to our residents, and we need to be able to make the money back. We're not making a profit. We're barely scrapping by, but enough for us to be able to fix our wells, to maintain our water lines and things like that. And our staffing, city government, most of our money goes to staffing people to do the job that requires us to be able to give you the utilities that you need. And so it's expensive, and we want to make sure that everyone is supplied with the tools and resources that they need and also the salaries to be able to live themselves. I find it as a councilwoman very difficult to afford to live in the city that I represent as the youngest person here who owns a shoebox, 548 square feet of a home that I regret purchasing. It's disappointing, but I know that it's something that has to be done, and I'm with Joe that I think it's, sorry, Councilmember Dovin, and I think that it's for the ultimate long-term betterment of the city, and it's a tough pill we're all going to have to swallow, and it's unfortunate, but I know that we will work hard to work with whoever we need to do ensure that subsidies, incentives, or whatever are coming down our way. And I would encourage staff to really look into what we can do for low-income residents, because I know that that is no longer part of the program, and that's who I'm most concerned about. The seniors still have their options through, I think it's SoCal Edison, right? For that care program, but that does not amount to low-income residents. So we need to find something to supplement that, because that program went away. Those are my comments.
At the last meeting, the last council meeting, we went over this, and from my point of view, there was no time that I thought I would want to vote for something that raised, you know, the cost to our resident. But not just looking or hearing from our staff and for, you know, going through all the presentation, I actually took the effort to go and talk to all the district and went to the Orange County District, Water District to listen to what they say from all the council member and to see their point of view, you know, what is it, what can we do? Maybe a little thing that they said we could bring it back to our city and see, we could implement that to our city. But the reason why we have to do this, you know, we already talked about in infrastructure, but also there was, you know, the cost $1 million just for the water filter, and that is for our health. We have to pay for all the costs. And that is the reason why that I vote yes, and just because this is something that we have to do now. We don't want to just fix the pipe here and there, and a couple of years later it's broke, and what are we going to do? And so that's in my vote. Thank you.
I don't want to belabor it, but I just wanted to make a point, because I was a little upset after the last council meeting, because a news agency in the county, all they reported was, you know, Garden Grove City Council, they mentioned people by name, raised taxes or raised water rates, and they gave the percentage for the whole five years in one year. And, you know, they misled the public on that. So I understand Councilman Bridigan's frustrations on the different sizes of meters, but for most people, it's a 3/4 inch to 5/8, 5/8 to 3/4 inch main. Yeah, well, I think most of the ones in my neighborhood are 3/4. But anyway, you could argue that, but that's a monthly minimum charge. Whether you're using water or not, it's a monthly minimum charge. Like Councilmember Nguyen Penalosa said, you know, this is a, this is water that we're talking about, and we don't make water. We have a water company that provides the water. We have to buy water from the Orange County Water District, or we have to buy water from up north. The truth is, the first year, you're buying water at 748 gallons in a lot, and it costs $3.26 for 748 gallons right now. The increase for the first year is 14 cents for that 748 gallons. So if you use a lot of water, yeah, if you get after 3300 spur feet, cubic feet, they call it, it's a few dollars per month. As you know, we are billed bimonthly, so, you know, convert that to a monthly charge. It's still about the third cheapest utility that we pay, next to your, probably your gas bill and your trash bill. But this isn't a tax. This is a professional study that was done, and it's done every five years. Whoever's sitting on this council every five years has to take this on, and there's a five-year study so we can pay for the cost of the infrastructure and the water. You know, I don't want to raise taxes or fees on anybody. I live in Garden Grove. I have to pay this too. But this is a responsible thing to do to keep our water infrastructure top-notch, which we've always done, and to give the lowest cost we can for the heavy water users. And that's all I got. And did anyone make a motion on that?
No, please.
I'm going to make the motion to approve.
I'll second. I'll just remind everyone, this is a second reading, so we already deliberated on this at length in the last one, and this is a second reading, so presumably unless anything has changed.
That news report got me all heated up.
Yeah. So we have a motion in a second. Call the vote.
Motion received. Six yes votes with Councilmember Bridigan voting no.
All right, that takes us on to matters. There's none listed, so we'll go around the horn. George?
Yeah, I got a few. We had a couple. Turn my mic on. We had a couple speakers. One came and talked about the bike lane over there on West, and, you know, I've gotten a lot of chatter and actually got a few texts about how terrible that situation is over there. Heard from a couple of the homeowners and one of the business owners who lives over there. Anyway, it's become a traffic nightmare, just like I kind of said it would. I think we should task the traffic engineer with looking at ways to mitigate traffic over there. You know, and hopefully we can facilitate a better traffic flow for the cars. I mean, the two or three bikes, they're fine, but the cars are the ones that are all jammed up, and people are taking, it takes them another 20, 30 minutes to get home. So, you know, I would recommend that the city traffic engineer take a look at ways we can mitigate, shy of tearing all that back out again, which I'm not, I voted against it to begin with, but, you know, if we need to tear it out, maybe we do. You know, we should look at that collectively. I'll let Councilwoman Klaafstein, I think that's her area. So, I mean, I'll let her take the lead on that if she chooses or not. But, so yeah, the bike paths, let's give them some love, traffic engineering love. Street lighting, I believe, we've heard from other people coming over the years, there is a system in place that the city has through Public Works, and I think there's, it starts out with a petition signed by your neighbors, and you submit that to Public Works. And so they had already left, but if they're watching this on TV, call Public Works, and they'll probably be able to assist you with your street lighting or at least point you in the right direction. I want to say congratulations to our new mayor pro tem, Cindy Tran. Oh, I forgot my wife's birthday last meeting. It was December 2nd, so I want to say happy late birthday to my wife. I told her that day, but I didn't say it on the day, so anyway, happy birthday, Lisa. Happy, there you are. And then last but not least, Merry Christmas to everybody. I hope everybody has a wonderful, joyous holiday season, and that's all I have.
John?
George, now you got me worried that I didn't say happy birthday to my wife back in September. So happy birthday, honey. If I forgot, I think I might have. I'm always good with the anniversaries usually, but nothing much tonight, just Merry Christmas. I hope everyone has a great, safe, and sane, happy New Year and prosperous 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple things. First, I thank you to all of you for your vote. Each one of you here, you know, you have the knowledge, you have the experience, and you know, beside me and Councilmember Chodovin, the junior one, you earned the title. I did not, I was, actually, I was speechless, because I didn't come here thinking about I'm going to leave here with the new title. But I'm grateful to be here, just, you know, a voice for our resident. I remember I used to be that resident that's speaking, and no one listened. And so anytime when the resident reach out to me, I always take it serious. Every time we have the meeting, not just going through the material, I actually, you know, do my homework, asking the staff many, many, many times. And that's at the beginning, you guys see that, like I ask the question, and not just that, I tag along with our staff, I went with the policeman, I went with the B-Rite, whatever. Just, you know, anytime the resident reach out to me, I took the action, and I, you know, make sure that our staff take care of that, and, you know, there's a result to it. So thank you to all of you, and if I could stay in my role, I will help you to be part of that role too. Okay? And then next one, I want to say thank you so much to all the resident youth group, friend, and family that came to the Fight Hunger. We actually made 30,000 meals for the hunger, and they all donate here for Orange County Food Bank. We were told that a lot of grand for the COVID, you know, during the COVID was kind of at the end of that, and so they need more food, and just happened, you know, we gathered youth group from the Boyan Gescow, Vietnamese Youth Coalition Group, and many other group around here. There were more than 200 volunteer that came. We didn't anticipate that. And thank to Councilmember Stephanie Coffinson for coming to the event. Sorry, we didn't get a chance to announce you, but you was there, and I hope that you get to enjoy making the food for the poor. So thank you. And then last but not least, I've been talking about having the holiday light contest, and so our staff came up with the way that any of the resident would be able to submit your picture of your holiday light, and so you would be able to submit a photo of your Xero for an online gallery called Garden Grove Holiday Light 2023. The submission deadline has been extended to the Thursday, December 14, so you only have a couple more days at 4:00 PM. To submit a photo, please visit ggcity.org/holiday-lights, or you could go to our city website. You would be able to see that. So let's show your Garden Grove holiday spirit by submitting your photo today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm going to use just a little bit more than my usual three minutes. We have so much to celebrate tonight and so many things to mention. First off, I'd like to let the public know that one of our buildings have come back into the possession and property of Garden Grove, and that is really cause for celebration. It's hard work of our new directors, Nikki, Ursula, and especially our city attorney, Omar. I rarely recognize you, but in this case, I congratulate your team for delivering us that very well-deserved property acquisition. It will make a difference going forward on our City Hall campus. And I want to thank the sellers who have maintained that properly and has transferred it to us in timeliness observed with the close of escrow, and more details will be announced by the city manager. I'm not going to steal her thunder on that one, but it's a big cause for celebration. We also are thankful that we have some prospective tenants coming in and that the building will not be suffering from vacancies. And that's, again, due to the hard work of our staff, Greg particularly, and our city manager. And we are looking to rent out the space as soon as possible. So those are all very good developments. I was also at the Christmas tree lighting. We missed our mayor. Maybe it was Santa Claus. I don't know. But it was fun, and I direct our residents to look on Channel 3. We have links to the videos, and city manager Lisa Kim has shared with me some videos from those events. But so look for it, because it just spreads the holiday joy. I have some good news to celebrate too. I would have liked to get the pro tem. I'm a little bit envious, but congratulations, Cindy Tran, very deserved title. And I know it's not just ceremonial. You will represent our city well as pro tem. Uh, I was appointed a commissioner, uh, by Cal Cities for, uh, Public Works Transportation. Yes, I just received the news today by email. So thank you to, uh, Cal Cities President, uh, and all of the people who, um, went through my application and approved it, and I'll be starting to serve in January. But I will, I would, don't forget to, uh, thank our, uh, clerk, Terry, over there, and Pam, and Michi, who, uh, set our calendar, and make sure that we get these announcements. That's how I got the announcement, there's an opening for commissioners on Cal City. Yeah, so, uh, without their help and, uh, their diligence to get that information to us, we, we wouldn't be able to serve you. And also, I wanna share with you that one of the most important, uh, aspect of, of the city's responsibility to our council member, and our council member's responsibility to you, the public, is we have to get good information. So I appreciate the agenda review sessions that we receive, and the staff actually do the, a lot of the homework for us. And we are briefed, and we know ahead of time what we need to vote on and what the issues are. So without that kind of, um, guidance, we wouldn't be able to serve you, uh, effectively and efficiently. So I always remember to thank the staff, especially around the holidays, for providing us with the, the services that we truly need to represent you and make the right decisions for you. So, um, I guess that's, uh, about all I have. Uh, also, actually, one more la- last good news, and this also came by email, and that is the, the Housing Element certification. That is a big deal, that's a big deal. I don't wanna slip up on that, because I know Sean Park and our senior planner, Chris Chang, worked hard on that. So I don't wanna forget to recognize them for their contributions. We did get the certification, so we have to give ourselves a pat on the back. So Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everyone, and see you in the New Year.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you, um, I just wanted to make a few comments based on, uh, some of our communication, um, this evening. Um, as far as the bike lanes go, um, I, I've received emails both for and against. Some people are very happy with it, others are not. Um, and I've already spoken with our city manager Lisa Kim and staff about mitigating some of the higher congestion areas. I think so far, some of the problems consist around the, the daily commute times of morning and evening, and so we've looked at traffic signalization issues and so forth, and what we can do to mitigate. So it's a work in progress, we'll iron out the kinks and get it worked out. Um, and the other one, um, several gentlemen came from District Five, um, talking about the streetlights. And again, I'll make sure to, uh, work with staff on that, and see what we can do to, to help them, and, and talk about that, that process and so forth. I just appreciate residents having a concern and bringing it to council and sharing it with us. So thank you to the residents that came out tonight.
I have a couple different things, but I'll start with the larger one, which is, um, I had the opportunity to attend the Cal Cities State Board of Directors meeting for the second year, I'm glad that I was able to participate. Um, we have some deep concerns about an anti-local control ballot measure that it's gonna be on the ballot this upcoming election, and I would like for city staff to look into that and see if we're gonna take a formal position. Um, most of my colleagues on the state board in their cities have taken a, a non-supportive position of that ballot measure. Um, along with some exciting news that are coming, coming down as far as monies dedicated to homelessness activities. Um, but there are some pain points with the legislation that was updated that, um, deal with sober homes, so we'll have some tough pills to swallow, um, coming along with those monies. So just a heads up to my colleagues on that regard. We also had our Cal Cities OC Division Holiday Meeting, which only Cindy Tran, Councilmember Cindy Tran, attended, so thank you. I'm gonna grim, grimace at the rest of you for not going, but thank you for not leaving me by myself. Um, I also wanna give a quick shout-out to the students that participated in the Foods of Garden Grove videos. Uh, this was something that was born out of a very small idea that I had when I was Mayor Pro Tem, um, but then city manager Lisa Kim expanded it to something even larger, which I'm very excited about. And I would love to see more residents and students in specific take part in that with creative videos. I think that that gives it a fun twist and helps keep that, um, program alive. Um, I won't make my comments regarding the twenty-two freeway carbon trust, because I did earlier, but Lisa, ping for the reminder on that one. Um, and also bike lanes, that came up. I just want to say that I supported those efforts, and I still do. I may not like riding a bike along the street, um, but I know plenty of people do, and plenty of people don't, because of the fact that they don't have, um, safe ways to utilize their bikes in the city of Garden Grove, as we did not plan to be a, a bike-friendly city. And so it's gonna be growing pains to get to that point, and I hope that we continue along those efforts for those that want to be more active. Um, and lastly, uh, happy belated birthday to my baby brother, who just turned twenty and made me feel very old. That's it, thank you. Happy Holidays, everyone.
Mayor, members of the city council, just a couple highlights. Uh, just a gentle reminder that this Thursday is the last day to turn in your receipts to participate, um, in the Black Friday Goes Big, um, in partnership in coordination with the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. So for every fifty dollars that is spent in Garden Grove, it equals one, a raffle ticket for an opportunity, opportunity to win five-hundred dollars, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, or a one-night stay at Great Worth Lodge, and a potential gift card to Garlic and Chives. All the receipts, uh, must be brought to the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce offices on Main Street, um, by one P.M. this Thursday, December fourteenth, and visit our city website for more information. And lastly, thank you, um, Councilmember Dobin, and, um, just the collective council for your support in advancing our housing element. It was three years in the making, and programming and planning for nineteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-eight arena units in our community was a huge undertaking, um, through the effort of our community development team. And so definitely a win today with our approval letter for the official certification. So thank you, council, for all your support in that, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Uh, general counsel, anything to report out?
Mayor, we did have two close session items, but there is no reportable action out of those items. Thank you.
Thank you, and all with that, we will stand adjourned for this evening. Thank you all for coming and for hanging in there through the meeting. We appreciate you being here. Enjoy the rest of your evenings, everyone. Happy Holidays.